Good afternoon, delegates.
Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland.
Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland. This is Delegate Ness.
Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland.
Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland.
Good afternoon, Honorable Monique.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for logging in and being a part of our NAPKAT Committee meeting today. We are here today's September 1st, 2020. New month. One more month. It's our new physical year. With that colleagues, I know that we, I think, is Law &amp; Order Committee stills? Are they still working?
No.
No, I think they're done there. We're going to go ahead and continue to wait until we have a quorum colleagues. Right now, I do have four delegates on the line. And so we could wait a little longer, see if we get a quorum.
Speaker, I'm on the line. This is Delegate Daniel.
Good afternoon, Honorable Daniels.
Good afternoon, Freeland here.
Good afternoon, Freeland.
Good afternoon, Honorable Monique. Good afternoon. Honorable Daniels. Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland here. Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland. Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland. Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland. Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for logging in and being a part of our NAPKAT Committee meeting today. We are here today's September 1st, 2020. New month. One more month. It's our new physical year. With that colleagues, I know that we, I think, is Law &amp; Order Committee stills? Are they still working? No, I think they're done there. We're going to go ahead and continue to wait until we have a quorum colleagues. Right now, I do have four delegates on the line. And so we could wait a little longer, see if we get a quorum.
Speaker, I'm on the line. This is Delegate Daniel.
Good afternoon, Honorable Daniels.
Good afternoon, Freeland here.
Good afternoon, Freeland.
Good afternoon, Honorable Monique. Good afternoon, Honorable Freeland. Good afternoon. Honorable Daniels. Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland. 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 Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland.
Delegate, when you get here.
Good afternoon, Honorable Monique.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland. 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 Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for logging on. Again, we were just waiting to make a quorum. Right now, I have Honorable Edison Monique, Honorable Herman Daniels, Honorable Freeland, Chairman Ness on the line.
Daniel, so.
Chairman Daniels.
Carl Slater.
Honorable Slater. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland. 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 Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland.
Honorable.
All right. Honorable Law &amp; Order member. Good afternoon. Honorable Freeland. 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 Good afternoon. Eugene Sohn, thank you for being here. We're over here with us. That. The two members from Law &amp; Order, two members from Health Education, two members from RDC. I still don't have anybody from Budget and Finance. Speaker. Yes, Honorable Otto Sohn.
Can you guys reach out to the chairman and see if Budget Finance Committee and see if they can allow two people to, by being there, to get on the line? So we can move these two budgets forward?
Yes, Honorable Otto Sohn. We have staff reaching out to them right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon everyone. Think we might have a quorum now. Two members from each committee, or at least two members from each committee. Let me go ahead and, uh, let's go ahead and get started. I can't believe we have a quorum. Uh, Navo Kiyate Committee of the 24th Navo Nation Council, good afternoon everyone, this is a special meeting via telecommunication. Uh, I am here in Windrock, Arizona on the Navo Nation, I have my colleagues throughout the Navo Nation uh, on the line here. Today's date is Tuesday, September first, 2020, time now is three thirty-three PM. Uh, we have a proposed agenda before us, uh, presiding by myself Seth Damon, Speaker of the 24th Navo Nation Council. Uh, let me go ahead and, uh, do a roll call. We have a formal roll call going over here.
Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Hello, Delegate Brown's present.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown is present. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Speaker Damon.
Present.
Honorable Speaker Damon is present. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
Here, good afternoon.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels is present. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Present.
Honorable Mark Fre, Honorable Mark Freeland is present. Honorable Pernell Halona is excused. Honorable Jamie Hainio. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez is here.
Honorable Rick Nez is present. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater present.
Honorable Carl Slater is present. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Charlene Soh. Honorable Daniel Soh.
Daniel Soh is present.
Honorable Daniel Soh is present. Honorable Eugene Soh.
I'm Brian here.
Honorable Eugene Soh is present. Honorable Otto Soh. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Delegate Soh is here, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Honorable Otto Soh is present. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. Honorable Edison Wanika.
Here.
Honorable Edison Wanika is present. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Speaker, you have ten members present including yourself.
Colleagues, thought we had a quorum, but, um, all I have is, uh, one more member from Budget and Finance to make a quorum.
Good evening, Vice Chair Smith calling in right now.
Right there. Oh, this is Vice Chair Smith.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. is present. Speaker with eleven members present including yourself.
Okay, thank you with that. We have two committee rule, conduct Navo Kiyate Committee, Honorable Brown, Honorable Vice Chair Smith from BNF, Honorable Daniels, Honorable Freeland, Chairman Nez, Honorable Thomas Walker, uh, Health Education, Honorable Slater, Chairman Soh, Honorable Wanika, Law and Order Committee, Honorable Eugene Soh and Honorable Otto Soh, we do have a quorum. We're conducting this on a two committee rule. That invocation, uh, let me go down to Honorable Freeland, you mind doing the invocation for us this afternoon?
Not at all, Speaker, our chair, colleagues, uh, Otto Shalata, good afternoon, Delegate Freeland here. Let's go ahead and bow our heads and give thanks this afternoon and, 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 uh, care about our business today, Shalata, good afternoon. Our heavenly Father, our gracious God, our Creator, our Redeemer, our Savior, we thank you for bringing us together at this time to conduct the will and business and of the people, Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us today. Bless us and give us the strength, the courage and the wisdom, the knowledge to care about our days as, as we go about our business of the Navo Kiyate Committee. Father, we ask you to bless our families, all those we left behind. Return us to them safely if we have traveled today. We ask you to bless all of our Navo people at this time, Father, all those who are suffering or feeling ill or have any ailments, Father. All those who have lost loved ones during this pandemic, during this COVID-19 and battle this invisible disease. Give them strength at this time, Father, we ask you to bless all of our elders who may be feeling lonely, give them hope and opportunity at this time, Father. We ask you to bless all of our veterans right now, those who may be feeling a little ill or have some despair, whether it be physical or mental illness, Father, give them hope and opportunity as well. We bless, ask you to bless all of our leadership, our president, our vice president, our council, all of our chapter officials and all of our United States officials as well, our president, our congress uh, officials as well, Father, our chief justice as well. Bless her and her, and all of our, our travel court justices. Um, we ask you to bless all of our, all of our livelihoods, Father. Forgive us of our shortcomings, forgive us of all those sins that we have, maybe we have committed in any way we have offended you, Father. We ask you to bless each and every one of us right now at this time as, as we battle this COVID-19 and this invisible disease, invisible virus, Father, we ask you to give us the strength to continue and carry on our livelihoods. All those that are herding sheep or have animals right now, bless them as well. All of our pets, all of our, all of our livestock as well, Father, bless them all. But more importantly, we give you the praise and the glory at this time as we care about our business. For all these things, we ask you in the holy name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you very much, Honorable Freeland, for that invocation this afternoon. That colleagues, let's go ahead and move on down on the agenda. Recognizing guests and visiting officials. Thank you everyone for listening in again on YouTube, Vimeo and Facebook chat. Any recognized guests, visiting officials, colleagues. None, we can move on down to review and adopt the agenda. Mr. Soltero, if you can read the agenda into the record.
Mr. Speaker, members of the committees. Navo Kiyate Committee of the 24th Navo Nation Council, special meeting via telecommunication, Windrock, Navo Nation, Tuesday, September first, 2020, proposed agenda, presiding chair, Honorable Seth Damon, Speaker of Navo Nation Council. One, call me to order roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals, none. Five, receive reports, none. Six, old business, none. New business, A, legislation zero one seven zero dash two zero. B, legislation zero two zero seven dash two zero. Eight, close the meeting, announcements adjourned, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, with that colleagues, is there a motion?
Freeland.
Motion, Honorable Freeland, is there a second?
Second, Delegate Nez.
Chairman Nez. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions on the agenda? There are not, once, twice, three times. Record. Roll call.
Figure.
Vice Chair Smith.
Uh, thank you. I was trying to, uh, look up the, uh, legislation regarding the two-year extension that's NABI and then it goes to council. Um, I just got back and, uh, my phone doesn't have email right now or trying to open up the, uh, computer, um, I forget the number, I think it's, uh, two hundred something.
What a privilege.
What a privilege by Honorable Otto Soh.
Leave you, um, call for the question. Or something in a point of order. You called, you called for the question and can you move forth with the vote? Thank you.
Hey. Uh, Vice Chair Smith, uh, that is correct, but, uh, I recognize you still. Vice Chair Smith, are you trying to add something on to the agenda today?
Uh, yes, Speaker.
Well, what, what, what is it that you're trying, I, I'm not understanding, could you restate what you're, what you're trying to do?
I've got a legislation that I'd like to, uh, add on to the agenda and I, I'm trying to open up my computer and, um, it's, uh, legislation to extend it to your, um, O'Holleran's, um, request for the CARES Act. And that would be going to the, uh, Navo Nation Council.
Hey. Well.
I don't have the, uh, go ahead.
Vice Chair Smith, um, because of the, the lack of, or the, I won't say the lack, the, uh, because of so many meetings that are consistently happening today, uh, I would respectfully ask Vice Chair Smith if we can do that legislation tomorrow at the, at the regular NABI. And, oh, actually Thursday, today's Tuesday, Thursday, if that's possible, Vice Chair Smith, and it still can make it to count the special council session on Friday. And the reason why is because I don't want to lose a quorum today and I really want to get these budgets, that was the whole reason why we're having the session today. I just respectfully ask for that, Vice Chair Smith.
Uh, thank you, Speaker, with that, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, go ahead and call for the question. I'll wait till next, tomorrow.
Okay. Thursday, Thursday, Vice Chair Smith.
Uh, Thursday, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, Honorable Charlene Soh is on the line now too as well. Uh, with that, um, colleagues, if there's other comments, questions, we can go to the vote on the, uh, reviewing or accepting the agenda today.
Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Mark Freeland. Honorable Jamie Hainio. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Rick Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Honorable Rick Nez votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Charlene Soh.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Soh votes green. Honorable Daniel Soh.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel Soh votes green. Honorable Eugene Soh.
Good day, Otto, thank you.
Honorable Eugene Soh votes green. Honorable Otto Soh.
I vote green.
Honorable Otto Soh votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Wanika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Wanika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Almer Begay. Honorable Key Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Jamie Hainio. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Speaker with a vote of twelve yays and zero nays.
Committee members, twelve in favor, zero opposed, speaker not voting. Uh, with that also noted for the record that that vote is on a two committee rule. That moving on down, reviewing and adopting the journals, there are none at this time, receiving reports are none, old business are none. New business, I number A, legislation zero one seven zero dash two zero, sponsored by myself Seth Damon. Uh, colleagues, um, I'm going to hand this over to, uh, Mr. Soltero to read it into the record. Can somebody, uh, take over the helm?
Legislation zero one seven zero dash two zero, an action relating to the Navo Kiyate Committee approving and recommending to the Budget Finance Committee to propose this for year 2021 budget for the Navo Nation Legislative Branch. twenty twenty-one budget for the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch. For Navajo Nation Committee Rule, the Order Rule Eight, legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you with that.
Speaker, I'll take over. Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Smith, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. Uh, legislation has been read into the record. Need a motion?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Winika, need a second.
Motion.
Uh, motion by Winika, second by, uh, it was coming in scrambled, try again.
That is both.
Uh, here, Freeland. Motion by Winika, second by Freeland. Uh, Speaker, you have the floor.
Very much, colleagues, thank you for, uh, one, uh, thank you for being a part of the discussion this weekend, I know taking time out of your weekend to be a part of this budget process, and then, uh, yesterday too as well, uh, for accepting the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch budget. In that, there's a discussion too as well, uh, we did take in consideration, uh, one is your recommendations for change in the regards of three of the different, uh, areas of the offices, or actually the business unit numbers, let me say that instead. One of them is first, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Pro Tem Chair, and to my colleagues that are on the line, there was a change recommended for the Navajo Nation Council, ten ten oh one, uh, just see if we could swap those out with the new budget forms, uh, that were emailed to you, and those were emailed, uh, within the last thirty minutes to everyone. So we just need to swap those out, and that, that change was to take place in order for us to, Chairman Nes, as you indicated, uh, to, uh, um, look for, actually, uh, the change was in regard to the four forty thousand dollars for the vehicle rent, that four thousand was changed with a hypothetical mark, and the rest of the dollars were moved over to travel. The second was a business unit number, ten ten fifteen, Office of the Speaker. Uh, there was a question, Honorable, um, Chairman Nes and some of our colleagues too as well, were concerned about the, uh, possibility to, uh, uh, make sure that there was overtime, uh, uh, for, uh, individuals that were in the office, and there are changes that was made to that, and that's in the new budget forms, uh, titled ten ten fifteen, Office of Speaker, pages one through eleven. Last but not least, there was a change to recommendation, actually, it was just some typos, uh, off of Legislative Council, ten ten seventeen, uh, we just need to have those budget forms swapped out, uh, pages one through four on the budget forms. And then last but not least, recommendation for carryover amount, and this is a proposed amendment language, is on page two of two, line twenty, inserting the language. Item C, the Navajo Committee recommends the Budget Finance Committee consider the following requests for carryover for general funds, unexpendable balances for the Navajo Nation fiscal year twenty twenty to fiscal year twenty twenty-one. One, ten ten oh three, Budget Finance Committee, twenty thousand or remaining balance. Two, ten ten fourteen, Navajo Labor Commission, twenty thousand or remaining balance. Three, ten ten fifteen, Navajo Nation Office of the Speaker, one hundred thousand or the remaining balance. Four, ten ten sixteen, Office of the Navajo Government Development, twenty thousand or remaining balance. Five, ten ten seventeen, Office Legislative Council, seventy thousand or remaining balance. Six, ten ten twenty, Ethics and Rules Office, twenty, uh, which is twenty thousand or the remaining balance. Seven, ten ten twenty-one, Election Administration Office, fifty thousand or the remaining balance. Eight, ten ten twenty-four, Office of Auditor General, three hundred thousand or the remaining balance. And that was the one that was discussed yesterday about the Auditor General having enough dollars for the next fiscal year. Nine, ten ten twenty-five, Navajo Hopi Land Commission, thirty thousand or the remaining balance. Ten, ten ten twenty-nine, Human Rights Commission, thirty thousand or the remaining balance. Eleven, ten ten thirty, Health Education Human Services Committee, twenty thousand or the remaining balance. Uh, ten, uh, twelve, ten ten thirty-one, Resource and Development Committee, twenty thousand or the remaining balance. Thirteen, ten ten thirty-two, On Order Committees, Committee, twenty thousand or the remaining balance. Fourteen, ten ten thirty-three, the Navajo Committee, two hundred fifty thousand or the remaining balance. Ten ten, uh, fifteen, ten ten thirty-four, Legislative District Assistant, forty thousand or the remaining balance. Two, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly if necessary in this amendment, so supersede inconsistent language contained in the, in any other committee amendment which shall confront into the intent of the language of this amendment the Office Legislative Services with notice of the sponsored legislation is hereby authorized to make necessary governmental changes. So colleagues, just those, uh, three budgets need to be switched out, and then one is asking for that mass amendment for the carryover amount, removing those four, Honorable colleagues. With that, uh, I present the floor back to, uh, uh, give the floor back to the Navajo Committee, Mr. Pro Tem Chair.
Thank you, Speaker, that's my legislation number zero seven zero dash twenty, there is a request for, uh, change out amendment. Do we have a sponsor for that?
Speaker.
Yes, um, is this Elmer Begay?
Yeah, this is Elmer, so I'm just calling in.
Okay.
All right.
We have Elmer Begay on board. Uh, we need, uh, someone to, uh, propose the amendment that was requested from sponsor, Honorable Seth Damon, Chair, or Speaker.
Motion. Daniel So.
Second, Delegate Elmer Begay.
We have a motion to, uh, do an amendment one. And that's, uh, Honorable Daniel So, and second by Elmer Begay. Do we have copies of that? Is that emailed to us, or is that, uh, just read into record, uh, uh, Chair, or Speaker, uh, Damon?
Um, Vice Chair Smith, to answer your question, uh, both of those were emailed out, uh, today, uh, the, the latest ones were actually emailed out about twenty minutes ago, and then the, uh, change in the, uh, recommendation for the carryover was emailed out, uh, same time too as well. So both of those are all emailed out.
Aggressive, thank you, uh, Speaker, for clarifying that. Uh, committee members, do we all have that, uh, downloaded, or you looking at the, uh, amendments? I'll take that as a yes. Uh, any questions on Amendment One? Committee members? Uh, no questions for the Amendment One. I'll call for the question. Uh, may we have roll call?
Honorable Elmer Begay.
I vote green.
Honorable Elmer Begay votes green. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Seth Damon.
Green.
Honorable Seth Damon votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Nes.
Delegate Nes votes green.
Honorable Rick Nes votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond, I'm sorry, Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Green, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Junior votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Delegate Charles Newton, uh, what are we voting on? I'm sorry, I just now got on. Hello?
Uh, Chair, Chair, uh, Newton, we're voting on Amendment One, which is the, uh, change out forms on budget for the, uh, legislation zero one seven zero dash twenty, and it's posted on the email, it was posted twenty minutes ago, so if you want to, uh, open it up, but we're voting right now.
Okay, yes, I do have it up, thank you, I, I vote green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canaz Bacardi. Honorable Mark Freeland. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Speaker Pro Tem with a vote of fifteen yays and zero nays.
Uh, thank you, fifteen yays and zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting. Amendment One passes. Back to the, uh, main motion, we have, uh, Honorable Winika, and also second by Freeland. Any questions on the main motion? No questions on the main motion of legislation zero one seven zero dash twenty. We'll go ahead and call for the question, may I have roll call, please?
Honorable, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, uh, I have a question, this is a sponsor.
Uh, Chair, Chairman, uh, sponsor, Damon, go ahead.
Um, there's a, uh, I need to refer to my agent. Um, there's, there needs to be one more swap out, and that's, uh, regarding to every one of the, uh, the same procedure that has been done at every one of the other committees. Uh, I'm going to refer to, uh, Mr. Potero.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
I recognize your, uh, request on that.
Uh, corrected email that I sent this a, a corrected, um, at eleven oh three. I'm sorry. At eleven oh three, I sent you an email that said, here is a correction on Exhibit C. These are the forms that are for Exhibit A, B, C, D, and E that incorporate the, uh, language from the budget hearings. If you take a look at it, they need to be swapped out because the original ones were not completed, these, this, this, uh, Exhibit A, B, and C, A, B, C, D, and E are completed, and that's the one that I went over with you guys late last night, in, uh, in, uh, Exhibit A, there were no changes, so there was no changes to the allocation. In, uh, Exhibit B, um, hold on. In Exhibit B, what you did is, uh, the second column, uh, column D and column E, since the allocation didn't change, we filled in those num, no, I'm sorry, this is the wrong one. There were changes that were in, um, A, B, C, is the, is the crux of it, where you added in the, um, um, recommendations for changes to the council budget, the, um, Speaker budget, and the, um, Legislative Council budget, where you did the substitution. E is where you added in the, um, uh, unmet needs, so all of those weren't on the original forms that were attached to the legislation. So what you need to do is, uh, make a motion and a second to replace the ones that were attached to the legislation with the ones that were emailed this morning, so that everything is corrected. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair.
Aggressive, thank you, uh, Tom Potero, and the, uh, Amendment Two, swap out, uh, committee members, need a motion?
Chairman Key Allen, on line.
Uh, welcome aboard, uh, Mr. Key Allen. Need a motion?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I thought Key Allen made the motion, I apologize, I'll go ahead and make the motion, this is Charles Newton.
Charles Newton makes the motion, need a second?
Second Delegate James.
Second by Honorable Vince James. Committee members, any questions on Amendment Two?
Vice Chair, this is Delegate Bacardi, can you restate Amendment Two? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, for the question there, uh, Honorable Bacardi. Uh, Mr. Potero, could you please, uh, run that through summary real, uh, on the, uh, exhibits, Honorable Bacardi?
Mr. Pro Tem Chair, members of the committee, what you're doing with this amendment is you're replacing the Exhibit A, B, C, D, and E that were, um, attached to the proposed legislation. The new ones that you are inserting have the information, uh, based on the discussions held during the, uh, budget hearing. So Exhibit A didn't change, Exhibit B, what you're doing is you're adding in the information for column D and E, since the, the, there were no reallocation of funds, the numbers, uh, just transposed from the, the first page to the se, uh, second page, Exhibit A to Exhibit B, so the plus or minus different column will all be zero. Underneath Exhibit C, you had recommendations for ten ten zero one, which was to adjust Form Three, the GS column, correct vehicle rental, four thousand, reallocate update is necessary. Under ten ten seventeen, you had Office of Legislative Council, which was to submit new budget submitted by Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov under OMB, after OMB reviewed verification, and that was completed. Office of the Speaker, you had reallocation of funds for overtime and bonuses, that was completed, so those three were done underneath Exhibit C. Underneath Exhibit D, you had no, uh, conditions of appropriations or legislative concerns. Underneath Exhibit E, you had, uh, unmet need request for ten, ten sixteen, Office of Navajo Government Development, sixty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars, which consisted of operating supplies, building space, consulting programs, media. Ten ten seventeen, Office of Legislative Council, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four for personnel supplies, attorneys, insurance premiums. You also had a request from ten ten twenty-four, Office of the Auditor General, two hundred thousand operating supplies, consulting contingencies, losses. From ten ten twenty-nine, Human Rights Commission, forty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-one vehicle rental, personnel, personnel, travel, air, operating supplies, for a total unmet need identified of five hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Mr. Pro Tem Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Potero, uh, does that answer your question, uh, Honorable Bacardi?
It does, thank you, Vice Chair.
Committee members, any other questions for Amendment Two? If not, we go round the horn, and we have roll call, please, round the horn. Round the horn.
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Key Allen Begay.
Vote green.
Honorable, Honorable Almar Begay votes green. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior.
Delegate Key Allen votes green.
Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Hon- Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you, Bobby.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Seth Damon.
Green.
Honorable Seth Damon votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
For shooting.
Green.
Freeland.
For shooting.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Paul Pernell Holona. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carlos Slater.
Delegate Slater green.
Honorable Carlos Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond Smith Junior, oh, I'm sorry. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Vote green.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Junior votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yaasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Edmund Yaasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Speaker Pro Tem with the vote of nineteen yays and zero nays.
Uh, thank you, Bobby, for the, uh, roll call. Nineteen in favor, zero opposed. Vice Chair not voting. Uh, back to Speaker Damon. Is there any other amendments or anything from the agents?
Uh, thank you, uh, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, uh, Mr. Pro Tem Chair. I know, uh, we're good to go. Uh, thank you very much, colleagues.
Uh, thank you there, uh, Speaker Damon. Committee members, any questions on legislation zero one seven zero dash twenty? Vote. Bobby, can we go around the horn?
Mr. Chair Pro Tem, you need a second reading.
That's right. Uh, give me a second reading for Amendment One and Amendment Two. Then we'll go around the horn.
Mr. Chairman Pro Tem, members of the committee, you have two amendments. Amendment Number One, Page Two of Two, Line Twenty, Insert New Language. Underscore C. The Nava- Navaikiya Committee recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee consider the following requests for carryover of general fund unexpended balances from the Navajo Nation Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One. One, ten, ten, oh, three, Budget and Finance Committee, twenty thousand dollars for remaining balance. Two, ten, ten, fourteen, Navajo Nation Labor Commission, twenty thousand dollars for remaining balance. Three, ten, ten, fifteen, Navajo Nation Office of the Speaker, one hundred thousand dollars of remaining balance. Four, ten, ten, sixteen, Office of Navajo Government Development, twenty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Five, ten, ten, seventeen, Office of Legislative Council, seventy thousand dollars of remaining balance. Six, ten, ten, twenty, Ethics and Rules Office, twenty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Seven, ten, ten, twenty-one, Election Administration Office, fifty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Eight, ten, ten, twenty-four, Office of Auditor General, three hundred thousand dollars of remaining balance. Nine, ten, ten, twenty-five, Navajo Hopi Land Commission, thirty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Ten, 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 twenty-nine, Human Rights Commission, thirty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Eleven, ten, ten, thirty, Health Education and Human Services, twenty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Twelve, ten, ten, thirty-one, Resources and Development Committee, twenty thousand dollars remaining balance. Thirteen, ten, ten, thirty-two, Law and Order Committee, twenty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Fourteen, ten, ten, thirty-three, Navaikiya Committee, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Fifteen, ten, ten, thirty-four, Legislative District Assistance, forty thousand dollars of remaining balance. Two, renumber, relaider succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly if necessary, and this amendment shall succeed in consistent language contained in any other committee amendment which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services, with notice to the sponsor of the legislation, is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical changes. Amendment Two, swap out Exhibits A through E with new Exhibits A through E. Mr. Chairman Pro Tem.
Uh, thank you, Manuel. Legislation number zero one seven zero dash twenty. We have a motion and second for two amendments. Call for the vote. Around the horn.
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior.
Uh, Delegate Key Allen votes green.
Honorable Key Allen Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green. Get up.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Seth Damon.
Green.
Honorable Seth Damon votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carlos Slater.
Delegate Slater green.
Honorable Carlos Slater votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Junior votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Green, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. So?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Junior.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Junior votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yaasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Jamie Hino. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate James votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Edmund Yaasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Speaker Pro Tem with the vote of seventeen yays and.
Alma Begay votes green.
I'm sorry, Alma Begay? Honorable Alma Begay votes green. Speaker Pro Tem with the vote of eighteen yays and zero nays.
Uh, thank you, Bobby. The, uh, legislation zero one seven zero twenty passes with, uh, two amendments. Eighteen zero. Vice Chair not voting. No opposition. Moving on down to Item B on the agenda. Legislation zero two zero seven dash twenty. Could we have that read into the record, please?
Mr. Pro Tem, Chair members of the committee, tracking number zero two zero seven dash two zero, an act relating to Navaikiya Committee accepting and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the Navajo Nation Executive Offices. Per Navajo Nation Committee Rules of Order Rule Eight, legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording. Mr. Pro Tem Chair.
Okay, Tom. Need a motion for legislation zero two zero seven dash twenty. Motion.
Alma Begay, vote, uh, motion.
Eugene So, second.
Have a motion by Alma Begay, second by Eugene So. Honorable Speaker Damon, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, colleagues, and thank you very much again, uh, for being a part of this discussion. I know that there's other meetings and there's other things that you have to do today, so thank you very much for fitting this Navaikiya Committee, uh, into the schedule this afternoon. Uh, I bring to you legislation zero two zero seven dash two zero. It is a, uh, Navajo Nation's, uh, uh, accepting the recommendation for the, uh, to the Budget and Finance Committee of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for the Navajo Nation Executive Offices or the offices that are, are under the Office of the President and Vice President. And that is, uh, including the Office of the President and Vice President, Navajo Nation Washington Office, Navajo Hopi Land Commission Office, Office Hearings Appeals, Office of Miss Navajo, Telecommunications Regulatory Commission, Executive Protective Services, Office of the First Lady. Um, the, um, and, uh, the I do, on that, on Navajo Nation Youth Advisory Council, um, that'll be in the discussion. Uh, also in there see Navajo Nation Veterans, uh, and the Office of the Defender too as well. Uh, colleagues, I bring to you this legislation as we did go through their budget, through the budget process, uh, and in their budget proposed, uh, summaries that they do have. There was an email that was sent out. Uh, and that email was sent out from Mr. Tom Potero. The only thing they're requesting is, colleagues, is to switch out Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, Exhibit D, and Exhibit E. And that was the only amendment that we're requesting. Other than that, this is, uh, what I bring before you. Um, we do have, uh, individ- we do have, uh, individuals, uh, I do believe Mr. Chris Bahi's on the line. Uh, if there's any comments or questions, but I do have Mr. Tom Potero as a agent who helped assist in getting this budget done and completed for the presentation here today too as well. So again, colleagues, just if you want to go through the formalities, this is just accepting what the budget hearings were presented, uh, or what came from the budget hearings at the Navaikiya Committee, both on this past Saturday and yesterday. Moving this forward to, uh, recommendation to the Budget and Finance Committee, to the Comprehensive Budget, then further going back and have Committee Comprehensive Hearing and then eventually accepting these, uh, budgets at the Navajo Nation Council Special, uh, Comprehensive Budget Sessions. So with that, colleagues, I yield back to the floor. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Speaker Damon. On Amendment One, uh, do we have a motion for Amendment One? Swap out Exhibits?
Motion, Winika.
Motion by Winika, second.
Second, Delegate Paul Begay.
Second by Honorable Paul Begay. We have a motion and a second on the Amendment One to swap out Exhibits. Committee members, any questions on the Amendment One?
Uh, this is Delegate Carrati with a question.
Honorable Carrati, you have the floor on Amendment One.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. On Amendment One, uh, to the sponsor, is this changing, um, the veterans' budget? Is this a budget that, um, gives the money back to the chapter veteran organizations? Or does the veterans' budget have all of the funding going to the agency? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Carrati. Uh, back to, um, Speaker Damon? Uh, Speaker Damon?
Thank you. Thank you, uh, um, Vice Chair Smith and, and Chairman Carrati, there's something I think that's a little bit different this year. Let me have, uh, Mr. Tom Potero explain that.
Um, Mr. Pro Tem Chair members of the committee, on this one is a little bit different. Uh, remember on Saturday when we were having the discussion on, um, the forms that were sent? The one that's attached to the legislation was updated, um, by O M B. And remember the email that I sent you from Mr. Emmett Francis that changed the Exhibit A? Exhibit A previously had a whole bunch of them, uh, and, and, uh, included veterans. However, the revised one only had one zero three zero zero one, Office of the President, Vice President, one zero three zero zero two, Navajo Nation Washington Office, one zero three zero zero three, Navajo Hopi Land Commission Office, one zero three zero zero five, Office of Miss Navajo, one zero three zero zero six, Telecommunications Regulatory Commission, one zero three zero zero seven, Executive Protection Services, one zero three zero nine, Office of the First Lady, one zero three zero two one. And, and that was explained then. So during the budget, uh, hearing process, these were the only ones that the, uh, committee discussed and, and made a decision on. Um, Mr. Chair, may I, uh, go on ahead and go over the changes in the form?
Uh, you may proceed, uh, Tom, right.
Okay, so I just emailed this to you guys, uh, I, 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 I emailed it last night and then with the, with the legislative one, but I emailed it again, so you should have it. Uh, in the, I sent you two emails. The first one was the submittals that were made by Office of the President, Vice President that list, uh, the changes that will be in Exhibit C, uh, C. And tha- that was sent, and then I sent you, uh, Exhibit A, B, C, D, and E. Underneath Exhibit A, uh, because. And Office of the President, Vice President, reduce media to ten thousand and reallocate funds, include additional justification for consulting, and that should be the first attachment to the email that I sent you. The next one is under one zero three zero, zero six, Telecommunications Regulatory Commission, eliminate one thousand for food and reallocate funds. That would be the second attachment. Underneath one zero three zero zero nine, Office of the First Lady, insert, uh, classification information for unclassified position. So I emailed you the Form Three. Under one zero three zero zero two one, Navajo Youth Advisory Council, review Form One to incorporate virtual platforms, insert enabling legislation form on to Form Two, Part Two. I sent you a copy of the enabling legislation, which had a C A P beginning. So those were the four that were recommended. Underneath D was recommended conditions of appropriations, legislative concerns. There were none. So only the word none was inserted on that amendment. Underneath Exhibit E, uh, was the recommended unmet needs budget. There were none received, so the word none was received. So those were the changes that were made, uh, from the revised form. And, uh, if you have any questions, I believe Mr. Bahi is on the phone. Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Potero. Uh, committee members, any other questions for Amendment One?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, this is Delegate Karati.
Honorable Karati, you have the floor on Amendment One.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, just a simple question. Is this, I didn't hear if, uh, I understand we're on this amendment, um, but this amendment can fix that. Uh, I need to know, is the veterans' budget, is it all of the money going to the agencies? Or in this budget, are, is the money going to the, the chapter veteran organizations? So, is it going to five agencies or is it going to one hundred and ten chapter veteran orgs? Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that question, Honorable Karati. Uh, is, uh, Speaker Damon, do you have Chris on board? Maybe he can answer that, or, uh, Dr., I mean, Mr. Z?
Thank you, uh, uh, for that question. Uh, Mr. Pro Tem Chair and, and Chair McCarty. That, I'll refer that over to, uh, Agent Mr. Christopher Bahi.
Uh, thank you, Speaker. Uh, this is Christopher Bahi. Uh, thank you, everybody. Good afternoon. Um, it, it, uh, I'm giving, I'm giving Mr. Worline on the call to answer that. I just did a brief update, uh, from him yesterday on some questions that the oversight had for him. So he's been listening to internet questions, but he should be calling you right now.
Mr. Worline, are you on? Could the call now? Once he gets on board, we'll let him have the floor. For, for the question that, uh, Honorable Karati posed, posed on the veterans. Mr. Worline, are you on board? Director Worline is on the call at this time. Okay, Mr. Worline, there was a question posed from Honorable Karati. You have the floor.
Were you saying the Delegate Karati has the floor or that I have the floor? I'm sorry, I, I quite literally just got on the call, so I have not heard any of the questions.
Okay, Mr. Worline. Honorable Karati, could you repeat the question? Uh, Mr. Worline's on the phone right now.
Uh, thank you, uh, Pro Tem Speaker, um, colleague. My question is Amendment One of this legislation. Uh, does this, for the administration budget, does this amendment reflect, uh, the funding for, um, Veterans Trust Fund to go to the five agencies?
So the, um.
Thank you.
Uh, Delegate Karati, um, you were coming in and out, but I think I got it with the gist of the question. So the, the general fund portion and consolidation of the business units is only for the operations of the administration. But the budget.
Um, under Exhibit A, I believe that the trust fund being allocated for the veteran population to the five different business units, that, what, that money was included on the legislation. Does that answer the question?
Honorable Karati, does that answer your question on your Exhibit A?
Uh, I apologize. I'm trying to look for this, so when you say five budgets, just clarify, are you, is the funding going to the agencies? Or is it going to be broken down to one hundred and ten chapter veteran organizations? On this bu- on this budget, what we're, what we're asking to, to be voted on right now. Thank you.
Mr. Worline, you got the, uh, floor to answer my question?
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so to provide clarification, right now, based off of the input received from the Veterans Advisory Council meeting today, we are sticking with the five agency accounts moving forward. Because to be able to try to modify the budget at this point in time based on criteria that is being developed in conjunction with the Health Education and Human Services Committee, we will not make any reasonable deadline for this legislation, nor a reasonable deadline for the beginning of the fiscal year. So there will be a more comprehensive report that I will put together based on the Advisory Council meeting that was held today on how those funds will be continued to be distributed for five accounts for F Y twenty one, how that impacts the one hundred and ten chapter veterans' organizations, and then a rough forecast of what we will be looking at doing for next fiscal year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Worline.
Uh, Pro Tem Chair Smith, this is Delegate Nez. I have a question.
Um, Chairman Nez, you have the floor on Amendment One. Chairman Nez, you have the floor on Amendment One.
Oh, thank you. I was on mute here. I was talking away. Sorry about that. Thank you. Uh, Pro Tem Chair Smith and my honorable colleagues, Twenty Fourth Navajo Nation Council and Mr. Swarlin. I do have a question for you, sir, which is in reference to you as the Executive Director for the veterans. Have you consulted with the five veterans' organization at the agencies about their budgets? That's my question. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Nez for that question. Um, Mr. Worline, you may respond back.
Thank you for the question, sir. The direct answer is no, I have not spoken with the five agencies. But on two separate occasions, I have spoken with the Veterans Advisory Council that does consist of the commanders from those five agencies, the agency commanders. So on two separate occasions, today being the second and August fifth being the first, they were advised on the intent to consolidate the one hundred and ten different C V O business units into five agency business units. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, any other questions from the committee members on Amendment One?
Uh, yes, this is Delegate Karati with a question.
Honorable Karati, you have the floor for Amendment One.
For Amendment One, thank you, uh, Mr. Wor. I don't have that document. Can you just let me know, uh, what commander from Northern Agency participated and voted, uh, for my records, uh, so that I could be accountable on how I vote today on your budget? Thank you.
Uh, we'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Worline requesting the document. From Honorable Karati, you have the floor, sir. Uh, Mr. Worline, still on the line?
My apologies, I still had the phone on mute and didn't notice. Um, thank you for the question, ma'am. For both meetings, Northern Agency was represented by Candace Pioszuni. I had, I have the sign-in sheets for the meetings, and as soon as I get back into my office, I can scan those over to you. Thank you.
Pro Tem Chair. Pro Tem Chair, I have a follow-up. Delegate Nez?
Uh, Honorable Chairman Nez, you may request, so you may go ahead and ask a question on Exhibit One.
Thank you, Pro Tem Chair Smith. Mr. Swarlin, I, I keep hearing you referring to the Advisory Council, the Veterans Advisory Council. My question is, do you often visit the agency veterans' meetings and consult with them directly at the Ho'gon level? That's my question.
Honorable Chairman Nez, uh, Mr. Worline, you have the floor.
Thank you for the question, sir. Since the COVID pandemic began, I have not met with any of the agencies. And I've, if I'm recalling correctly, I think it was January, maybe the beginning of February was the last time that I met with Northern Agency Veterans Organization.
Well, thank you with that reply there, uh, Mr. Worline. Committee members, uh, any other questions on Amendment, Amendment One? If not.
Vice Chair, uh, Delegate Paul Bagay.
Honorable Paul Bagay, on the amendment, you have the floor.
On the amendment, uh, thank you, uh. I know that, uh, there are, since times when we come upon, uh, an unpopular move, uh, an unpopular decision. I know that, uh, from my area here in Western Navajo, hearing from the veterans, uh, this is one of those, uh, uh, unpopular decisions. And, uh, it's a good question when we, uh, as, uh, as one of my colleagues asked, uh, how often is, uh, uh, communication set in place with the, with the organizations? Uh, I think that is very important. Uh, just, uh, and if, if that spokesperson from the five agencies, uh, has, uh, come to this meeting to put a vote down to say that I'm speaking for the, for the organization from my agency, uh, is, is that how it was done? Or is, uh, i- is the person coming from the, one of the agencies or one of the five agencies voting on that, this issue herself or his, himself? Uh, this is a, an, an unpopular decision i- in my area going to the five agencies rather than the one hundred and ten chapters. And what do we do? Do we continue and just, uh, let it be and let the unpopular decision continue and be set in place? Uh, I believe that will open the door for more, uh, unpopular conversations going forward. So, uh, that, that is my thought and that is the, uh, the thinking and, uh, the popular decision, uh, from the Western Agency. As far as the veterans concerned, that is, uh, I know that, uh, they're not happy with, uh, how this is gonna be going. Uh, the money going to five agencies rather than going to the, to the one hundred and ten chapters. Thank you.
Honorable Paul Bagay, question from Honorable Paul Bagay. Uh, Mr. Worline, you have the floor.
Had trouble with my mute button there again for a second. Um, I apologize. Thank you, sir, for that question, um, and I will do my best to answer this one. When certain members representing the agency come and provide an opinion, they do their best to represent the entire population of that agency. They do acknowledge that within an agency, the personnel can be of two different opinions. And so those members, the Advisory Council, those agency representatives, they choose which position to take. Are they for an issue? Are they against an issue? And in accordance with all the preceding policies and Navajo Nation laws, they make their recommendations to the Executive Director, to me. And based on that input, I make a decision. When we are talking about issues as potentially controversial as the consolidation of the distribution of the Veterans Trust Fund from one hundred and ten different business units into five business units, the intent is to be able to make the funds more easily accessible to the entire Navajo veteran population. And what portions of the veteran population are struggling at is understanding the involvement of the chapter veterans' organizations, what their role is in contributing the, to the, the Director's decision. And so based on the meeting that was held today with the Veterans Advisory Council, the members present, there was nine of the total eleven members present or on the telephone for the meeting, they understand better today, after the conversation, after the facts were presented, that the reasons behind the consolidation of the business units into five will make the funds more easily accessible to the veteran population at large. And they are asking, and I am going to oblige, that once we are able to start having agency meetings more in person, or if those meetings are being held through teleconference, that they will be inviting me to those meetings to be able to provide more detailed reports for the veteran population and provide the general veteran population an opportunity to ask questions directly. And that's one of the key aspects that have been breaking down during this process is as information are relayed to the agency commanders, there is something lost in translation as it gets down to the individual veteran. And that lost in translation is what has been causing the confusion. So we do have plans moving forward to address that, to make sure that the veteran population understands the reasons behind this consolidation and to see how it is in the best interest to have the funds managed in this manner. So I hope that answers your question, sir. Thank you for the question.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Worline. Committee members, on the Amendment One, question from Chairwoman Newton. You have the floor.
Okay, she's, uh, Honorable, uh, Ray Miss, Mr. Pro Tem, thank you. Uh, Mr. Worline, I just got a text message from the Northern Agency, and they said that they did not agree to the move, um, for the five agencies versus the chapter distribution. I think it's really important that, um, you provide us those documents as quickly as you can, uh, regarding the vote. I believe, uh, Candace Pioszuni was at that meeting as well. It happened last week on Tuesday, uh, and she was one who also voted, um, not in favor of doing this move. So I'm a little bit confused as to, um, how you can say that, uh, that you consulted the agencies and use specifically Candace Zuny Pioszuni's name when we, uh, witnessed something a little bit different at the Northern Agency Veterans Organization meeting last week. So, uh, I think it's important that we get those documents. Otherwise, uh, my question would be for, um, Legislative Council, in the event that we do move forward with this, um, budget, uh, what changes can be made, uh, I guess, when, when it goes to a council? Or can any changes be made to correct this issue with veterans' organi- or with the, uh, Veterans Administration? I think that's more of a Legislative Council question, so if I can get some guidance on that, uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chairwoman, uh, Newton. Question to, um, Worline and also to Legislative Council. Uh, Mr. Worline, may you reply back, and then we'll go to Legislative Council.
Ma'am, thank you for the question. For the August fifth meeting, Ms. Candace Pioszuni was on the phone for that meeting. And because we were on a cell phone for part of that meeting, the connection between her and I was dropping during meeting several times. So there were portions of the meeting that she did miss. But I will send and provide a copy of the meeting minutes, uh, as soon as I get back over to my office. Then you did mention correctly that last week Shiprock Agency did have a meeting where they passed a resolution. But then Ms. Pioszuni was present today again to receive a new brief and be able to ask questions very directly on how this is impacting specifically Shiprock Agency. So, in the course of a month, conversations happen on both sides of the equation. They happen between myself and the Advisory Council. They happen between the agency and the C V Os, and then once again, between myself and the Advisory Council. So the, the discussions are an ongoing, uh, discussion. It's a continuing process. So we are working to find a solution that is equitable to both sides. So based on the guidance that I have received, both from Office of Legislative Council and from DOJ and as well as O M B, as we progress through the fiscal year, specifically right now through the budget season, if we do approve the budget with the five different business units at a later time, whether that be next week, next month, um, into the middle of October, November, we can reestablish the one hundred and ten different business units and execute budget transfers from the agency level accounts. and execute budget transfers from the agency level accounts down to the chapter veterans organization accounts. Part of that conversation was held today and the concern there becomes the equal distribution of the funds once again. And to be able to distribute the funds equally, what it becomes required of the agencies, and since we're talking Northern Agency, all nineteen of those CBOs need to provide accurate numbers on their veteran population to be able to ensure that their chapter receives a fair share of the Northern Agency allocation. In short of them providing that, we cannot fairly distribute Northern Agency's allocation into the nineteen different business units, station, into the nineteen different business units for that agency. So thank you for the question. I'll get you those documents uh, within the next half an hour. Uh, I'm at the President's office and I'll return to my office here shortly. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zerline. Uh, Legislative Council, are you on line?
Yes, I, I am, uh, on the line, um. Counsel can, uh, and the question is whether, uh, I believe whether, uh, Counsel can make, uh, amendments uh, to the veterans', uh, uh, budget? The, the answer is yes, you could make them at this level. You could, uh, make them, uh, at the Counsel level. Uh, one of the issues that I am, you know, the, I, I gotta tell you, the veteran fu- veteran funding is not easy, uh, to get a handle on. Uh, uh, very, very complex, um, uh, so, uh, I am just now starting to understand all of the various distributions and how things, uh, go out. Uh, did have a, uh, meeting with, uh, Mr. Zerline, Department of Justice, uh, and OMB Janet McCabe, uh, where it was, uh, uh, discussed that, uh, based on some of the, uh, audit, uh, suggestions and other things that there was a need to, uh, revise how, uh, uh, dollars are distributed so that, uh, however the dollars are distributed is reflective of the number of veterans in the particular agency and the number of veterans at particular chapters. Um, I do know that, uh, the Veterans Administration is, uh, moving uh, in that direction. We have, uh, some upcoming legislation that will be approving, uh, so, for example, some new housing plan, which is under, uh, HESI and some other things. So, yes, I mean, the, the short answer is yes. Uh, it, it, it can be, uh, it can be amended by, by Counsel.
Thank you, Legislative Council. Uh, Committee members, any other questions for amendment one?
This is Delegate Charles Newton.
Chairwoman Newton, you have the floor on amendment one.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem. Uh, Mr. Mr. Zerline, um, so I, I, I think I heard you say that there was a meeting today in which Candace Zuni Payoty was part of. Uh, can, well, I guess first I should ask before I have these follow-up questions, was there a meeting today to discuss this issue?
No.
Okay, so when was the meeting that you had with the agency, uh, commanders?
Ma'am, I don't know who answered that first question, but that wasn't me. There was a meeting today that not, that, it was eight of the agency commanders plus myself were on the call. So there was nine members of the Advisory Council present today to discuss this at length.
Okay, and that was today?
Yes, ma'am. We convened the meeting, I think it was at nine oh eight this morning, and we adjourned roughly at two thirty.
Committee member.
I've got a couple of follow-up questions.
Committee member, let's stick with amendment one, the swapping out of A, B, C, D, E. If we want to ask particular questions, we can go to the main motion on that.
Order, order.
Point of order by Otto So. What's your point of order?
Uh, I share Smith and Pro Tem, that's what I was gonna allude to, uh, related to, uh, the conversation here. Is, we're swapping out budget forms and we're, we're playing in the flower field right now and, um, I, uh, just move forward with the budget and, uh, I guess we can, um, call veterans on a regular Navi schedule related to this matter. Uh, thank you.
I recognize, uh, Honorable Otto So, Vice Chair. Point of order, do stick with amendment one, swapping out exhibits A, B, C, D, and E. And we have a motion on the floor, uh, Honorable Anika and Honorable Paul Begay. Uh, please reserve your questions for the main motion. I will call for the question on amendment one.
Point of order.
I heard some background noise. I didn't catch what, uh, the background, ground noise was. Vice Chair Smith.
Uh, this is a question of privilege, Delegate Cardy.
Honorable Cardy, question of privilege on amendment one, on amendment one.
On amendment one. One have the Navajo Veterans Administration's budget on amendment one.
And that question's to, uh, Mr. Zerline.
Uh, Vice Chair, that's a question to you or to staff? I believe we're in order with these questions regarding veterans. This amendment is asking us on amendment for a budget, which in, which in my opinion includes veterans. I need to know, is that what I'm voting on with this amendment? That was my understanding. Thank you.
Honorable Cardy, yes, uh, this amendment one is to swap out exhibits A, B, C, and D, and E. Uh, I can turn it over to, uh, Honorable Seth Damon. He's the sponsor of this legislation. Um, Chairman Damon, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, for that, Mr. Pro Tem Chair and to, uh, my colleagues for this discussion. And Chairman Cardy, let me go ahead and refer, uh, turn it over to, uh, Mr. Tom Platero who explained.
Mr. Pro Tem Chair, members of the committee, the budget form that you are considering right now does not include great veterans. On Saturday, when we were going through the budget hearing that was explained, uh, they updated their form and, and the current one that's going through for executive offices does not include those. Um, I'm not sure if Emmett is on the line, uh, Mr. Francis might be able to provide some clarification what changed between the time the legislation was introduced and when we started going into, um, to, to budget mode? Cause the email that I received, uh, indicated that, um, only these ones needed to be on there. And that's the one that's before the committee now for, 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 uh, consideration. Mr. Pro Tem Chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Platero. Uh, Committee members, um, any other questions on exhibit, uh, amendment one, swapping out the exhibits?
Uh, Vice Chair Smith, this is Delegate Cardy.
Honorable Cardy, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, for the clarification. Uh, my question is, if, uh, under our law, Navajo Nation Veteran Administration is under the Office of the President, Vice President, it's an executive office. Uh, why isn't their budget part of, um, this legislation? Thank you.
Well, thank you for the question on that behalf, uh, Honorable Cardy. Do we still have Chris on the line?
Yes, sir, I'm still here.
Uh, there's a question posed, why isn't there any budget regarding this? By Honorable Cardy? For the veterans?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question, Delegate Cardy. Um, from my understanding in our discussion with the Office of Management and Budget, we are currently in the Oversight Budget Hearing. So the Oversight, um, the Oversight Committee for the Veterans Administration is Health Education and Human Services. So the executive offices which are in the exhibit, um, before you have an oversight of Navi Kete Committee. And so that's why the Veterans Administration budget, their, their Oversight Budget Hearing went to the Health Education and Human Services Committee. And, um, OMB would, can probably provide further clarification. But that's how, um, I, I know there was confusion at the beginning of the hearings over the weekend with the agenda listing all the executive offices, which included hearings and appeals and the Navajo Public Defender. But there was clarification that those budget, um, their Oversight Committees were Law and Order Committees. So, I, I know there was discussion on multiple, some programs having multiple Oversight Committees. Um, but with this situation, their Oversight was Health Education and Human Services, which is why their budget wasn't included with the current exhibits under the current, um, legislation. Thank you.
Question, thank you. Uh, Committee members, any other questions on amendment one?
This is Delegate Charles Newton.
Honorable Charles, Chairwoman Newton, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice, uh, Vice Chair Speaker Pro Tem. Just a clarification, and maybe this is a question for Office of Legislative Council with Dana. If we vote to walk out the exhibit right now and then we vote on moving forward, uh, the legislation, um, then does that mean that we do approve the changes that the Veterans Administration is trying to make at this time? I believe to be clear, uh, they're trying to divide the funding between the five agencies as opposed to, uh, the one hundred and ten chapters. Can I get some clarification on that?
We'll, we'll get the, uh, clarification for you, um, Chairwoman Newton. Uh, Legislative Council, there's a question posed on the amendment one swapping. Are you available for this question?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, so, I would like OMB to correct me if I am wrong, but Exhibit A, uh, reflects, uh, the budget that was also, uh, approved by the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Uh, I believe it does, unless I've missed something, I'm trying to review it. Um, so, if it, if it does, um, yes, uh, Madam Chair, if, uh, uh, the Navi Kete Committee, uh, approves this Exhibit A, uh, you are, uh, approving the distribution, uh, to the five, uh, five agencies. For the general funds.
Thank you, Legislative Council for that answer. Committee members, any other questions regarding amendment one?
Speaker Pro Tem, Chairman Pro Tem. Delegate Daniel So.
Honorable Daniel So, you have the floor on amendment one.
On the Veterans Administration, Hess Committee enacted Legislation Zero One Seven Three. Um, basically the general funds for administration as well as the Veterans Trust Fund Housing Assistant Distribution to the five agencies. There was a, um, memorandum from uh, Legislative Council that explained and, uh, in concurrence with, uh, Department of Justice. But the main question that the committee had was previous to what the budget was presented, there was a hundred and ten chapter distribution based on the fifty fifty formula, Appropriations Act. And the advice we got was, um, the Veterans Trust Fund isn't part of that fifty fifty distribution. So, there is only two budget line items, uh, of general funds. Excuse me, not general funds. Uh, the general fund is all at Central. And that's where the, uh, agency veterans, uh, service officers and, um, funds to support that office are at Central. The agency money is the housing money. Where the Veterans Trust Fund, uh, basically says that it would be distributed equally to the five agencies. So that's how that budget was presented. And because the committee couldn't amend it because there was no applicable law to put it back to a hundred and ten chapters, then that's where the committee, uh, did a condition of appropriation that where the Veterans Administration would relook at distributing to the hundred and ten chapters. And Honorable Carl Smith, I can't rem- or Carl Slater, um, I can't remember the exact wording on that. Condition of appropriation was that they had to give us a report back by the end of the first quarter or the end of the second quarter. But, um, the Legislation Zero One Seven Three is proceeding to the BNF Committee with those items that I just, uh, delineated. And then from there, it'll go to Navi and to the Counsel. So, uh, my understanding is the Veterans Fund's budget, whether it be general funds or the trust fund, is not part of these exhibits. They are part of Legislation Zero One Seven Three Dash Twenty. So I beg to differ with, uh, Legislative Council, that if we vote on this to exchange the exhibits, it does not, uh, approve the Veterans Administration budget. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman, uh, Daniel So, on that information on Legislation Zero One Seven Three Dash Twenty. Uh, Committee members, any other questions on amendment one swapping out, merely swapping out exhibits A, B, C, D, and E? Call for the question, round the horn.
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable K. Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Paul Begay. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Honorable Amber Kennesee Bacardi. Honorable Seth Damon. Honorable Seth Damon votes green. Honorable Herman, excuse, Honorable Mark Freeland. Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Uh, Hino votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes. Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
Green, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
Honorable Otto votes green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable Paul Begay.
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Speaker Pro Tem with the vote of eighteen yays and zero nays.
With a vote of eighteen in favor, zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting, Amendment One passes. Committee members, back to legislation on the main motion, Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Twenty. Any questions on the main motion?
Delegate Hino.
Honorable Chair Hino, you have the floor for Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Twenty.
Okay, this is on the main motion, uh, Mr. Zerline. Uh, just a question here real quickly, uh, not, yeah, I guess it's related to the budget. Uh, my first question, and I'll have a follow up, is that, uh, currently, uh, where is the Veterans Administration hanging out of? I understand it's out of the warehouse. Is, uh, is that correct? That's my first question.
Uh, committee members, any other questions on Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Twenty? Uh, Mr. Zerline, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the Veterans Administration Central Office is now located in Sebennito, New Mexico, on Highway Two Sixty Four, the giant blue building formerly known as the Navajo Westerners Lumber Yard. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you for that answer. Um, Honorable Chair Hino, do you have a follow up question?
Okay, and, uh, thank you for that answer. And who's the, uh, uh, owner of that warehouse? And, um, is this person being paid a monthly rental and what amount? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Zerline, you have the floor regarding that question.
Thank you for the question, sir. The owner of the building is the Navajo Nation, more specifically the Division of Economic Development. There is no monthly lease payment. There is an intergovernmental agreement between the Navajo Nation Veterans Administration and the Division of Economic Development whereby the N N V A occupies the building for a time yet to be determined at no cost to the Veterans Administration or the Navajo Nation. Thank you.
Committee members, any other questions for Legislation Number Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Twenty? If not, second reading, second reading on Amendment One, um, Sir Manuel.
Mr. Chairman Pro Tem, members of the committee, you have one amendment, swap out Exhibits A through three with new updated Exhibits A through three. Mr. Chairman Pro Tem.
Thank you on the, uh, second reading. Round the horn.
Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi, green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Seth Damon.
Green.
Honorable Seth Damon votes green. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Hino votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Green.
Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
I vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
Green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Honorable Almar Begay. Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr.
Uh, Delegate K. Allen Begay votes green. Thank you.
Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Rick Ness. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellowhair. Speaker Pro Tem with the vote of seventeen yays and zero nays.
Uh, thank you Bobby. Uh, vote of seventeen favor, zero opposed, Vice Chair not voting. Motion carries on Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Twenty with one amendment. At this point in time, I'll turn the helm back over to our Speaker, Honorable Damon.
You very much, uh, Vice Chair Smith for taking over, uh, for the last two legislations and guiding us to the process in order for us to approve, uh, uh, those legislations and recommending legislative and executive offices to, uh, other budget, to the Budget Finance Committee, uh, starting tomorrow. With that colleagues, moving them down on the agenda, we don't have anything else, close of meeting announcements, any announcements colleagues?
Uh, Speaker.
I got Madam Chair Amber Cardi, Honorable Freeland, and I think Honorable Eugene So, so we start with Madam Chair Amber Cardi.
Uh, thank you Speaker. Can I request, uh, that trip, um, to expire yesterday or on how?
Ma- Madam Chair, your reception is going in and it's, uh, I can't hear.
Thank you. Get a, um, I'd like to request an update on the Navajo cares, how much of that funding was spent, um, prior to the expiration, uh, yesterday? And, uh, my second request is that because they said the request, how much of the, uh, twenty one, uh, this, uh, this first budget, um, based as a research, speaker.
Ma- Madam Chair, I, I, I think I heard the first request is what's, how much of the funding has been expended from the cares funds? And then the second one is, uh, I could not hear you.
Sorry Speaker, uh, Manny Clear, I'm walking around, um, trying to get a better signal. The second request is, uh, from O M B and Office of the Controller, how much of the fiscal year twenty one budget is cares eligible for reimbursement? I could text you my question. I apologize. I don't know why my reception no longer works here. Thank you.
There's eligible for reimbursement. First one is, uh, the, much of the drawdown. I didn't hear you. Did, uh, Controller get back to you on that one? Um, we'll, uh, work on that, uh, Madam Chair, uh, to get those two questions answered. I know that we were working, uh, on, um, we had a meeting on Friday and then also on Monday, uh, we were trying to get that available and we're trying to get that report out together by Thursday, uh, for everybody at Nav籍 Committee. We'll work on that. I need a...
Motion adjourned.
You have a question?
Okay, thank you. Moving on down, uh, Honorable Freeland on announcements. Honorable Freeland?
It was me, video, yes.
Okay, uh, um, uh, this is the lineup, Honorable Freeland, Honorable Eugene So, and then Honorable Hino. Let me go to Honorable Eugene So first, Honorable, uh, Chairman Hino. Honorable Eugene So?
The Speaker, I need to get a handle. I think we need to get a handle of the donation, uh, since carpet nineteen that's coming off on to the reservation from around the world. That, 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 and we need to answer the questions of the people. Where can we get a handle on that? How much, if there's money, what, if there's other stuff? Uh, where can I get it or can we get it to be presented to us? Thank you.
A request on the donations that the Navajo Nation has received, is that what your, is that your question, Honorable Eugene So?
Oh, I just could try the, try the, you can add a, sure, thank you.
Request on an update from, on how much the nomination is received, we need that. We can add that on as a Navi agenda item, um, need contact Department of Justice and the, or the Health Command Center. If they're still in existence, I'm not too sure. Okay, moved on down, Honorable Chairman Hino.
Okay, she, thank you, uh, so listen to David, um, just, uh, Ned Riggler, Nav籍 here. Meeting, when is it scheduled? Then, um, we'll override legislation beyond that meeting schedule. Thank you.
Hey, let me go, uh,
Hello?
Chairman Hino, I'm gonna refer to Mr. Patero, the next Nav籍 Committee meeting is this coming Thursday at ten AM. Uh, Mr. Patero, in reference to the override legislations.
Mr. Speaker, members of the committee, uh, for the special meeting on Thursday, underneath reports, you have a report on industrial hemp, hemp processing projects, a Navajo name for hemp by the Venus Smith in Digicam. And then under, there's no legislation under old business, under new business, you have Legislation Zero One Six Nine Dash Two Zero, an action relating to Nav籍 Committee of the Navajo Nation supporting efforts to reduce the small loan annual percentage rate from one hundred and seventy-five percent to thirty-six percent and requiring the New Mexico Legislature to adopt the thirty percen- thirty-six percent annual percentage rate sponsored by Honorable Daniel Esso. But, uh, B is Legislation Zero One Seven Two Dash Two Zero, an action relating to Nav籍 Committee supporting proposed bills H R seven five five seven and S four two three two introduced in the United States House of Representatives and Senate to amend title six of the Social Security Act to extend the coverage of coronavirus relief fund payments to tribal governments. Sponsor Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. C is Legislation Zero One Eight Two Dash Two Zero, an action relating to Nav籍 Committee and the Navajo Nation Council overriding the Navajo Nation President's veto of Navajo Nation Council Resolution C J Y dash six two dash two zero sponsor Honorable Daniel Esso, co-sponsor Honorable Eugene Charles Newton. D, Legislation Zero One Nine Eight Dash Two Zero, an action relating to Nav籍 Committee and the Navajo Nation Council overriding the Navajo Nation President's veto of Navajo Nation Council Resolution C J Y dash five nine dash two zero. Eight, close of meeting announcements adjournment, um, Mr. Speaker.
There it is, Honorable Hino. Hey, any other comments, questions, uh, actually announcements, announcements, any announcements? There's none colleagues. Is our motion adjourned?
Motion by Charles Newton.
Second by Charles Newton, second by Honorable Vince James. Uh, colleagues, scoreboard. Bobby, roll call.
Honorable Almar Begay.
I vote green.
Honorable Almar Begay votes green. Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr.
Uh, Delegate K. Allen votes green. Thank you.
Honorable K. Allen Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Paul Begay.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Nathaniel Brown.
Delegate Brown votes green.
Honorable Nathaniel Brown votes green. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Charles Newton votes green.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton votes green. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi.
Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Thank you.
Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi votes green. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Mark Freeland.
Green.
Honorable Mark Freeland votes green. Honorable Jamie Hino.
Hino votes green.
Honorable Jamie Hino votes green. Honorable Vince James.
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green. Honorable Rick Ness.
Delegate Rick Ness votes green.
Honorable Rick Ness votes green. Honorable Carl Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Slater votes green. Honorable Raymond Smith Jr.
Green.
Honorable Raymond Smith Jr. votes green. Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr.
Green.
Honorable Charlene, um, I'm sorry, Honorable Wilson Stewart Jr. votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Daniel So.
Daniel So votes green.
Honorable Daniel So votes green. Honorable Eugene So.
I vote green. Thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Thomas Walker Jr.
Thomas Walker votes green.
Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. votes green. Honorable Edison Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Honorable Edmund Yasi. Honorable Jimmy Yellow Hair. Honorable Charlene So. Speaker with the vote of eighteen yays and zero nays.
Very much colleagues, that we adjourn, have a good day, have a good evening, have a good week. Uh, we'll see everybody about sooner, ten AM on Thursday's NABI. Uh, then we do have a special council session, we have sixteen confirmed members who, uh, have signed a petition for a special session this coming Friday, and the, one of the biggest items on there that we must pass is the, is for our colleagues in Western Agency, the quadrilateral agreement extension, so look forward to that discussion. Again, thank you very much, everyone, for being a part of this NAB KIC Committee special session today, yeah, have a good day.
Thank you, Speaker Damon. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Ness.
I lost reception for that final vote for the two oh seven, so I'm okay with it, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, bye.
Bye.